Okay, ready?
I call the order, the Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, regular board meeting. Roll call, please.
Lazinski?
Here.
You're not?
Here.
Nukin?
Here.
Kraft?
Here.
Liam?
Here.
Okay, could we please stand for the time? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as. Okay, we always start off by reading our mission statement and our vision statement. So our mission statement is to educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And our vision statement, the Wessex City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through our strategic planning process, and tangible results. And I would like to welcome all of our visitors here today. It's nice to see some students here, too. And you're certainly welcome to attend even when you aren't required to, so feel free to come back. Right, Claire? Sorry. Okay, anyway, welcome to all of you. Is there a motion to approve our agenda?
Someone?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kraft?
Yes.
Nukin?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Lazinski?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we move on to our recognitions and informative reports, and it's Mrs. Musselman, it's going to
And Mr. Wilson.
And Mr. Wilson, okay, will give us a report card presentation.
Thank you all for taking the time tonight to listen to myself and Mr. Wilson. As you know, we've all received our school report cards last week. We did see a slight decrease from five stars to four and a half stars, so we do want to go through those categories and explain that rating. So we're just gonna kind of go through all the different categories. Please stop me if you have questions. Obviously, you're welcome to save it to the end, but the report card can get very intricate. I never thought I would know it this well, but it can be a lot, and it can be overwhelming, and so I'm gonna do very circus level, but if there's anything you want to know more about, please let me know. So can you move forward for me? So we're gonna give the overview presentation. We can keep going. Thank you. All right, so as you all know, we moved the stars rating system. So every district is given five, four, three, two, or one, and there are half-star increments awarded. Everything is based on points. So as you'll go through this, you'll see that there are multiple components. The components all have their own star rating, and then depending on how many points you get, though, per star, a four-star in one category and a four-star in another could mean completely different points going towards your total. So that's just the overall. Again, we wound up with a four and a half stars. If you go to the next chart, this is, I know, very tiny, but I will just kind of read it to you. Once you, again, you get points for every single component, once they average those points, that now goes on its own star rating system. We wound up getting a four point one zero seven, which falls in the four and a half star range. Four point one two five would have gotten us the five star. So we are point zero one eight away from the five-star rating, just for clarity on that. So if we keep going, again, these are all the different components that are measured. Each component has a different weight. And also, each component has a different point system. So there are five this year that go towards our total achievement, progress, early literacy, graduation, and gap closing. Mr. Wilson will go through the one that says report only, college career workforce and military readiness. That will count towards our overall score in the future. What we don't know yet is how it's going to impact. We don't know the points yet of that. So again, very brief overview of all five, but I want to make sure that it makes sense where this score is coming from. So if we go to the first one, so I'm sorry, so this is our, again, our overall. If you look, our achievement is five, progress is four, gap closing is five, graduation is five, and early literacy is four. So last year, we had an overall of five. Our graduation rate was four, our early literacy was five, so those flip-flopped. But because of the point system awarded in each category, even though we have overall the same number of fives and fours, we dipped from a five-star to a four-and-a-half star overall. So again, we'll kind of go through why that is the case. So achievement, this is kind of your most, your basic, and I put quotes around that, because what that is, is really what most of the public looks at in terms of our staff, our students. How did we perform? How many passed? You know, this is what we're looking at with achievement. How many got proficient? Advanced accelerated proficient. That is what we're looking at with achievement. So achievement overall, we did get five stars, and I do, did dip down into that more. Yep. So again, right here, there's a whole rating system. What we wound up getting, you look at that P.I., that performance index. Again, we're looking at achievement. We're looking at how many got that highest category of that advanced plus, advanced accomplished proficient. That's where you're gonna earn all those max points. So we wound up with a P.I. of ninety-nine point nine one four, and what that does, though, is show that we do have a five-star, four-and-a-half points. Okay, so four-and-a-half, four point seven five and five points over on the right, all would have gotten you the five stars. So that's important, because even though on that overview page it shows we're a five-star, the difference between a five, a four point seven five, and a four-and-a-half can really, you know, go against you in that final rating. But overall, you look at our achievement, we're a five-star district on our achievement with how our students are scoring on that advanced accelerated and proficient. So if you go to the next one, so here's kind of our general overview. I put a picture of rollercoaster to talk, because I liked Dr. Goggins analogy the other day when we were talking about that. As we all know in education, year to year, you're going to see ebbs and flows, you're going to see highs, you're gonna see a few lows. We don't worry too much when we see little ebbs and flows. That happens. That happens year to year with the group of students. You know, you never know what could play a role in that. So that is absolutely something we look at, but we also know that that is, that is normal. What we do look for, though, are too high, not too high, we love too high highs, too low and lows. For, just for our taste, you know, we like to see, we're okay seeing the little dips, but when we see something, you know, nine percent, we want to go really dig into that, kind of see what might be going on. So we did see a nine percent dip in grade-three E.L.A. and grade-eight E.L.A. I'll get into that further. Right now, I can't pinpoint why, because that all goes back to value-added, where we really look at the progress of specific students, of groups of students. That data is not available to us until October twenty-third. So this is our overall proficiency for E.L.A. Then if we go to the next one, we're gonna look at math. Math, very status quo. We had some no changes. Our lowest dips were four percent. When we look at geometry and grade-seven math, we also did make some gains in our algebra, our grade-eight math, and our grade-four math. So again, that rollercoaster, that ebb and flow, when we're looking at our math scores, still always good to dive in and find out kind of where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are, but that's our overall for math. And then we have science and social studies, which is, you can see, that is, those tests are not given frequently. So with our grade-five and grade-eight science, couple little dips. Biology went up big time with seven percent, very, very happy about that. And then when we look at our high school only, is the only subjects that have social studies tested, American history, American government, are raising one and a slight decrease in the other. So again, we have that ebb and flow. We want to still see, though, the why. We'd like to see, you know, what, what can we do? And a lot of times, especially right now, we can't really focus too heavily on that until we get into that value-add, value-added data. What we can do right now, what we are doing right now, is we can get overall standards in terms of this many students got proficient on this standard, this many students did not meet proficiency on this. So we can start to see those overall trends, but we can really dive deep on October twenty-third when we get some more data. This one, so this is what I just kind of summarized. So this is what we look at. We're looking at our achievement data. What's going on? Who's doing well? Who's not? Where are we seeing dips? Where are we seeing great increases? And maybe there's a reason for the increase. Did they do something, you know, it's a new strategy that we now need to move on to the next grade model? So this is what we always look at, just kind of the general overview. And then we dig in, and we do our action steps. You know, we are doing some big-time early intervention with Wes with our reading. We will go ahead then and dive into those third and fourth-grade E.L.A. standards to see which ones we're hitting hard and which ones we might still need to look at. Again, we just adopted a K-five reading program. We now have to look at our K-12 intervention. That's the second part of the legislation this year. Again, as I said, E.V.O.S. is that program that has our value-added data, and that's what we'll get October twenty-third. And with that, we can really dive deep. We can use our PLCs, our TBTs, look at our data and find out what's going on and what we can do. And with that, then, you know, just look at the data, using the data, you utilize that for progress monitoring and intervention as you need to. So that's what we'll continue to do. All right, progress. So progress, this is the one that is really based on value-added, so this one I can't get into as much. Progress measure goes with our subgroups. It really looks at our subgroups of students and their overall progress, but it also does talk about our English language learners. It talks about chronic absenteeism. So, but what we really want to look at is that value-added, which we don't have yet. So if you go to the next slide, though, what we do have is this. This is all they've given us so far. What they've given us so far is progress. Again, you're talking about, are we making progress in our students with our subgroups of students? You want blues and greens. Blues and greens mean, yep, you're on, you're on track, you're doing great. You want to look at your oranges, your grays, and your reds. Okay, so what we can see right now in the system is this, and it's not surprising. When we look at our achievement scores, they correlate to what I'm looking at right here. That we do need to look at eighth-grade language arts, for example, right? So, and that's okay. We'll go in, we'll dive deep, we'll look at American history, American government, we'll see what's going on. So this did not surprise me, based on our achievement scores. They do correlate, which is good, because if those didn't match, I, now we really need to find out what's going on. So now that we can see this, we can hone in, we can see what's going on. So again, that's the overview. Then what's gonna happen on October twenty-third is we'll actually be able to click on those boxes, and we'll be able to dive in and find out kind of different subgroups and what's going on, and what we're seeing great growth in, what we might not be seeing growth in, and what we can do. So this is exactly what I just said. So here's our progress. Who's making progress? Who isn't making progress? And then what can we do to alter our instruction if needed for certain groups of kids? And so that's what we always think in our mind, and then if you go to the next slide, we actually dig in and we find them. So those are our action steps. We do plan, like I said, me and Paul and Jane, I believe, are all going to the E.S.C. at the end of October, right after evaluated, value-added data is released, so that we can sit there with facilitators and start digging. So that's what we'll do, and then we're gonna utilize our November twenty, two thousand and twenty-four P.D. Day to teach our staff or reteach our staff. They know how, they love to do, they, they want their data. They want to do well. We have a phenomenal group of educators, and they are always looking for the next way that they can grow. And so we will be working with them on November fourth on our P.D. Day to look at their data, because again, they don't see their data until October twenty-third. Okay, gap closing. So gap closing, now, we are literally looking at, are we closing the gaps in all of our subgroups? Okay, so this one has, I believe, ten different subgroups that, I'm sorry, ten components and eight subgroups that it looks at. And the components go all the way from E.L.A. progress to math progress to gifted to absenteeism, you name it, it's pretty much on there. And it breaks it down by all of our, all the eight, I believe, different subgroups. So are we closing the gaps? The gaps that the state are saying, these are our gaps. So this, I believe, yeah, so here we go. So there are ten components, as you can see up there, and I apologize, nine subgroups. So every one of those, we can go in, we can click on, and we can see the exact number of points that we earned for that subgroup, which shows how much progress the state is saying that they are making. And again, that is then important when we can go into value-added, and now we can look at specifics. So you go to the next one. Here's what that, our takeaways from our gap closing component. Our areas of strength are our E.L.A. achievement and math achievement. We earned all the points for every single subgroup for E.L.A. and math. Our English learners, they increased by seven point one percent from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. They're, we're really making great growth with our English learners. Our chronic absenteeism, which we did work very hard on, are the goals set for Wesley by the state was eighteen point three percent, and we came in at fourteen point two. And then our graduation rate increased this year. Paul's gonna get into that. All of our subgroups met their goal set by the state. Where we do see that growth is looking at the value-added, the progress. So now we're talking subgroups of our E.L.A. and our math. And then gifted, we took one day, little tiny hit, and it's because of this new creative thinking ability identification. It's a brand-new idea that the state has said that we now have to do a universal screener for. No problem. It's part of our COGAP assessment, which that we will now do. We always give the COGAP in grades two, four, and six. Six to the students who weren't here in grade four. One subtest of that will be an automatic creative thinking ability identifier, so that will take care of itself. So again, all of these are very similar. If you look at our questions for reflection, who is doing well, who is not, and how can we improve? That's always, that's the goal of every educator, no matter what you're teaching, no matter if it's an in-class assessment or a state assessment. Who is doing well, who is not, and what can we do? Because we always want to grow, and we always want to meet our kids. So again, this is what we're gonna do. It's all very similar action steps. We look at our data, and we see how we're utilizing our time, our resources, our instructional strategies. We see what's going well. We celebrate what's going well, because there's a lot going well, and then we see what we, what we can do to make, to make even more improvements. And then, like I said, gifted will take care of itself, utilizing the COGAP, which we already use as an automatic identifier for creative thinking. Okay, Mr. Wilson, thanks a couple.
Thanks, Amanda. One of the areas we were very proud of was the increase in graduation rate. We were super close. I remember standing here last year, and we were talking about our percentage, and I think we needed a ninety-six point five, and I think we were like a ninety-six point three. So Mr. Woods and his team worked really, really hard at the high school, including the teachers and all of staff, to get that rate back up, but I believe this year we had a ninety-seven overall, which moved, bumped us up into the five-star area. It looks like right now, based on the information that we have, we'll be at ninety-seven for this past cohort, the twenty-four graduating class, so we should remain a five-star, but they did a really good job of tracking it, Todd, if you go ahead and switch there. So if you, yeah, this is the, this is the information there, so where they improved. So you can kind of get a feel for where we were, and they actually increased from a four to a four point two five, so we were happy with that. So go ahead, Todd. So looking at this, how is our, have we remained steady, improved, or declined? Happy to say that that has, that has increased each year. So we keep seeing that go up, and we're happy with where we are, and we're happy with the interventions that are, that are happening in order to make kids able to graduate. So what are the reasons students aren't graduating? So when we dig into this, oftentimes, it's students who might come to us with deficient credits as they get here. So they might come to Wesley High School as a junior, and we try to catch them up. We try to do things like Admetum, but sometimes, you know, when they come in, they're pretty far behind. So, and there's other things. There are students who have health concerns throughout their four years and things like that. So of the six or seven that we typically have, that's where the general range where that falls. And then what are we doing to go to the numbers? And once again, I'll stand here, but I will shout out Mr. Woods and his team. They meet weekly. They go everything. They have a list of all the students, so your names are all on list in there, and they go through to make sure everybody is where they need to be. And that doesn't start as a senior. They don't do that as seniors. They go through that starting about sophomore year, right after the students finish their first year. So really, what are the action steps? You know, there's always the in danger of falling behind list. You know, if, if students, and like I said, that starts right after freshman year. You get your first, you know, we mail home all your transcripts after first year. We'll look at those, and if you're in danger, there are generally plans, like we have in Admetum, which is a program we work on students. So see, you go through biology class, and you fail that class. Well, we'll make sure, you don't have to come back next year and take biology and then have a doubled-up class, and you're already behind. We try to work with you and do different things there, and that's credit recovery. We've done different things in math. You saw the, I think it was algebra, that was a three-point increase. So they've double, they have double-period math. There's some English labs that are available. Assessment authoring is something that we started last year and started to do, and D.J. at the middle school and Rob are really digging into that. And that, what that really, what assessment authoring is, it allows teachers to go into state standards and pull test questions that are directly related to state standards, so it helps them. They really like that. And then C.R.S.P.D., so that's the centralized reporting system, and as Amanda said, what we've been able to do is, we haven't been able to dig in student data yet. We'll get that through value-added, but what we were able to do is take all the test questions and met with the principals and said, okay, this is an area where our students are struggling. So this is maybe a standard we need to relook at. So what they've been able to do is in their PLCs, go through some of those things with them. So that's been happening over the last couple months for us. Okay, so college career workforce and military readiness. As Amanda said, it wasn't rated for twenty-four, and where it says it will be rated, I was actually on a call today with the E.S.C. of Northeast Ohio, and they said, well, it might not be. And I said, will it or won't it? And they provided us, if you look at the Ohio report card, you can click on that link and see all of our information. My question was, okay, we had a sixty-four point six, I believe, was our score. So I said, where does that translate in points? I want to be able to share that with you, share that with Dr. Goggins, so we have an idea. Is that a two-star? Is that a three-star? Is that a five-star? We don't know. And they're like, we don't know. So what we were told today is, they probably, probably won't rate it in twenty-five, because they don't know what the numbers equate to. Well, we're still moving forward with planning this, and if you go ahead and click, Todd. So these are the areas that will be rated on. So A.C.T. and S.A.T. remediation free. So one thing we did a few years ago, most of our students used to take the A.C.T. So we didn't have a lot of points, because we've been able to see this data for a couple years. We didn't have a lot of students taking the S.A.T. So we were like, let's flip it. So our students take the S.A.T. during the school year. We may discuss, perhaps, offering the A.C.T. as well to our students. We have to, we have to determine that. Other areas, honors diploma, three or more on A.P., and I think it was our last board meeting, Dr. Goggins had shared that we had a really good year with three or more on the A.P. Twelve-plus credentials on a state licensing test. That's something where we're trying to develop that, and I'll get into that a little bit. Twelve-plus college credits for college credit plus, military enlistment, apprenticeship. We just started our apprenticeship class. We have about nine kids in that class right now who are placed, all, I'm sorry, ten kids in that class right now, who are placed all over. We started that class in the spring. It's been really good. Mr. Patton, Bob Patton, if you know him, he's done a great job of actually working with the students. We have students placed at North, North Coast gastrointestinal. We just made a really nice connection with St. John West Shore, so we have students that are doing all different things there. So we're probably, we're hoping, we're gonna have the students that are in that class now present to the other students later in the year, so that that number increases, and we can get some students from real-life experience out there. Then looking at different things like pre-apprenticeship, and then O.M.J. just means Ohio Means Jobs readiness seal, plus two hundred and fifty hours of work-based learning. So I was kind of questioning that. I was like, well, we have a lot of students who get Ohio readiness or Ohio Means Jobs. How are they getting the two hundred and fifty hours, you know, between sports clubs, activities, and all those things? Some schools are doing differently. Today on my call, one school's like, you know, we have students that work in the cafeteria, they do different things. So that was something I was like, well, I'd probably have to view that a little bit more, but we'll see. So one interesting piece of this, as you look at this information, so students only count once. So if you look at, say, our class of two thousand and twenty-four, and we have, or we say we have three hundred students. So if you are a remediation-free, and remediation-free on the A.C.T. means basically a score of eighteen or above on E.L.A., twenty-two on reading and above, and twenty-two or above on math. So you could be, if you're an A.C.T. remediation, you count once. So I wouldn't say, if Claire, for example, is all of those, she doesn't get every point on there. We get to count her one time, so it's all your, basically, your denominator is always gonna be the class total. So the, the goal is to make sure our students are falling somewhere in there. Yes?
One of the things, and maybe you mentioned it, but you informed me earlier, is if they do put this on the report card this year, the data is from two thousand and twenty-three?
Correct. So, yes, so it's interesting. Well, and I was sharing this with Amanda earlier. So as we get our spring test results, it's the two thousand and twenty-four information that we get. So the data, if it were to go in, it's a year in the rears. So there's nothing like we can eat, like, it's not anything where we can say, let's go, let's adjust it. It's already in. So whatever our data is, which I said, which is good, because we had a solid A.P. year. However, our kids that are in apprenticeship won't reflect on this, because it's not that class. So they told us we should contact somebody, who I did today, just to say, hey, I feel like since this is kind of out there, but we don't know how it's rating, maybe a year of rate us, but don't count it in the report card grade, so we know what that sixty-four point six might translate to, so that we know that all of our things that we're doing can be accurately reported in E.E.S. and go on from there. Oh, go ahead, Todd. So what opportunities are providing students? Like I said, we're doing different things with internships. We're doing different things. Our dual enrollment numbers are down. I talked to Mr. Woods about this a little bit. And as Amanda mentioned, there's ebbs and flows, and we dropped a little bit, but we're still under ten percent in dual enrollment, which, one, I don't necessarily agree with those numbers. I had Chelsea Litton run a report for me to look at that a little bit more in depth. But I think we need more, I think we should have more students taking more college C.C.P. classes. So we'll look, we'll look into that, but as you guys have heard from us several times, oftentimes, our students go to these colleges, and they're like, take A.P., take A.P., take A.P. if you want to be in these, you know, if you want to get accepted to these schools, and I think that goes against us a little bit. So we have that. Internship and apprenticeships partnerships have started. We've been really pleased with that, and once again, if you get a chance to talk to Bob Patton, I would encourage you to do so. He's done an excellent job getting that started. And then we're beginning to research credentialing in classes. We are meeting with our business teachers with, from the high school and computer science, and there are some credentials that are available. We're gonna start seeing if we can kind of embed those within the classes, so students can walk out with something tangible with that, so. So really, continue to grow things, evaluating our S.A.T. and A.C.T. data to see where we are. And are we offering everything that we need to do? So like I said, offering A.C.T. and S.A.T. and talking to some different schools, you know, like I said, we've, we've had students take S.A.T. or A.C.T., and when, when you offer it, one goes up, one goes down. So what we're trying to say is, you know, do we offer both? Do we allow that? And that's obviously a larger conversation. We have to talk to Todd, we have to talk to Scott and everything about that. So and then keep reviewing our policies and procedures and see what we can do to increase that number. Okay, great. Thank you. Got any questions?
Question. I have learned that some colleges and universities do not accept A.P. classes. Do you have a list of those, so that the kids that?
Our, yeah, it's, it's interesting. Our counselors, and they only take certain scores, like there's some schools that'll say, if you get a five grade, we'll count that. If you only get a, if some, like, we always say three or above. That holds true for some. Our counselors do have that list. Maybe a good idea would be to put that on our website, and I could check with Chelsea on that, but I know they go over that.
I was just thinking, if kids are pressing themselves to take these A.P. classes and then get accepted to a university that doesn't accept them, they've just wasted a whole bunch of their.
And I will tell you, that happens more than you think. Honestly, it really does.
It's interesting, because I tend to hear, obviously, just the opposite, where kids are, students are starting in their sophomore year because they've accumulated so many.
Right. I've heard that, too, but I've also heard the opposite.
So schools like Ohio State, a lot of our students will go to Ohio State. We'll take that, for example. They count the A.P., but they also count C.C.P., so that's good. We had students who maybe want to go to Stanford. Well, Stanford's like, hey, great, thanks. And, but you're gonna retake those things. So it really depends, and it has a lot to do, and, and, once again, our counseling team's done a great job over there meeting with students and doing, kind of filling them in on, on the process with it. So I know Chelsea has some different groups come in and talk to them as well, so. Yes?
I just want, at a good perspective, you're making a good point that not all colleges accept every A.P. score, and that's generally what a lot of people say, and some students says, oh, well, you should take A.P. It's just more generally accepted, and inside, I believe, there's not really a difference between that and C.C.P. So I think adding more resources to less, you know, oh, well, this will be good, if I go out here, or maybe doing C.C.P., you're better. Just wanted to agree with you.
I feel like a fact, I get a fact checker. Thank you. No, I appreciate it. You know, your perspective is far more important than our perspective, honestly. So, forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Yeah, yeah. No, so, so that's kind of where we all.
Sorry. I just had a couple of things, and I agree with this Musselman, what you mentioned. We have a phenomenal group of educators. Absolutely, without a doubt, that are always student-centered, and I think the district does a phenomenal job. So no, that, that, that is my opinion. Know that, that, that is my opinion. Um, and, and the data that flows through. That is used within uh these reports. Is that data that flows to you? Continually throughout the year? And I would say no.
No.
Right, okay. And analogy, the analogy that I'm, I'm bringing. If a, if a portfolio manager managing investments and the S and P is up fifteen percent for the year and that portfolio manager. Knows with statistics that that manager receives every day is only up seven percent, that manager knows, hey, I, I need to. You know, beef up my large cap growth and own some more Nvidia. Uh, because I, I, I need to catch up to that, that higher mark. So I, I. I, I know that that's the answer, but I think it's important that all know the answer. This presentation, as we see articles like we've seen in local newspapers. We all want the Guardians to win every game. We want the Browns to win every game. We, we, we want that. And when folks see, hey. Neighboring districts um are exceptional and, and where's Westlake are the emails that we receive. Having this presentation in my back pocket would be fantastic, whether I present it on here or in paper form. Would be super helpful. And so that, that would be a big help for me as well. Um. Uh, Mr. Wilson, you're touching on that AP, um, when, when students are taking AP and is it what the gentleman. Um, in, in the crowd said that taking AP is not necessarily looked at as being uh. Not looked at as being as advantageous as college credit plus?
I think it depends on the scenario that maybe you and your family discuss. Okay, so, um, you know, by all means, if you're looking at an Ivy League school, I encourage everybody. To go look at their admissions standards and talk to people. Um, if you are going to, you're like, hey, I wanna, you know, Ohio State has the best program for me. Uh, I can probably do some of this through CCP, through Tri-C. That's a paid for thing. You can. Pro- possibly, we have students who walk out with associate's degrees. Um, you could do that. That's advantageous for a family to.
Sure.
Have somebody show up there. So it's really dependent on the goals. But that's why. You know, we say, don't start, I'm sure you heard this soon as you walked into the high school and you met as freshmen. Start your plan now. Get that underway and then work with your counselor. So you can kind of set your course and set your goals for where do you want to end up with the end.
Gotcha. One last thing, if I may, um, and this was brought to our attention via emails and some calls. When I, when I, corporation wants to get on the Forbes Top One Hundred Companies to Work For list. Um, there is a list of criteria and that firm knows that I need to check. All of these boxes in order to be on that Forbes Top One Hundred list. Is it that fair? Is it fair to say that for Westlake City Schools with regard to the report card? Uh, are there boxes that you know? We know we could check these boxes and, and we know that we will be one of those. Schools that's going to be in that article in next year's newspaper saying that, yes, we, we are uh exceeding. An exception.
Checking its boxes.
So the, the one thing I'll mention in, with in regard to that is um. And, and I think there's one important component that Amanda's gonna present on the early childhood one, the early literacy. And um. I think that one, if we can circle back to that answer after she just says this section.
Yeah, this is the last.
This might help.
This is the last component, early literacy, and this is um the one that if you kind of say was the heaviest hit, it was the heaviest hit. Um, so we're gonna look at why um that was the case because there is. A very large difference um between two years ago and last year. Because of one measure. And so we're gonna go through this early literacy. Go ahead. So early literacy and by state standards has three different components that you earn points for each of those three components. And then those are weighted to give you your final points. So if you look at the very bottom, in twenty twenty-three, we were weighted sixteen percent based on our points for grade three ELA proficiency. Forty percent based on our points for promotion to fourth grade. Then you go to this past year, twenty twenty-four, we now are, have all three that are counting for us. And then if you see, obviously, then the weights have to change because now we have three measures instead of two. So our ELA proficiency, what now is only forty percent. What's called improving literacy percent in the center is now twenty-five percent instead of zero, where it was, it was not counted for us in twenty-three. And then promotion of fourth grade drops to thirty-five. So we went from two components to three components. So what we have to look at is that center. Why all of a sudden is that a component for us? And if you go to the next slide. This is why. So we have what are called RIPS, Reading Improvement Monitoring Plans, something that we do have to do by law, but they are not a bad thing. This is how we catch kids and we figure out how to help them with their reading. This is based on kindergarten and kindergarten alone. So every fall, our kindergartners have to take a reading diagnostic within the first twenty days of school, have to. Based on tho- those results. If less than ten percent of your kindergartners show that they are on track with reading, an on-track score is directly given to us by the vendor of the assessment. If less than ten percent of those students are, are on a rim, that measure does not count for you. If more than ten percent of your students are on a rim, it does count for you. So it is strictly based on the first twenty days of school with our kindergartners, who is on on-track score and who is not. So in twenty twenty-three, we had twenty students on a rim. We had two hundred and five students. We just were under the ten percent. It didn't count for us. Last year, we had fifty-nine students on a rim, which did take us above the twenty percent. Or ten percent, I'm sorry. So why did we go from twenty to fifty-nine? We changed our assessment. So we have to give what's called the K R A R, kindergarten readiness assessment revised. That we have to give, it actually does give us great data. That one we have to give within the first twenty days of school. You don't have a choice. Then you can determine though, if you would like to use another assessment as well, because the K R A, K R A does give us good data. But we have other assessments that can really dive deeper and show us what students need, what, you know, where, where, they'll just tell me that they're starting with reading. What part of reading? There's a lot of different components. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, we used K R A and we used math. Our math assessment was gave us that twenty, that less than ten percent. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we changed from math to what's called M class DIBELS, that's called the DIBELS assessment. The map gives you a nice overall score. It is not, you know, useless data to us. It gives us a great overall score, but it's more heavily focused on comprehension. What we need at kindergarten and first grade, second grade, third grade is where are they struggling to read so that we can give direct interventions based on that? So we get what's called the M class. This test takes a few minutes where map takes roughly hour seventy-five minutes. And plus takes a couple of minutes. Every student is then sent home with a printout with exactly about six different areas, letter name, letter names, letter sounds, phonics. I mean, you break it down. It's, it's about six different areas, exactly how they're doing, then with targeted interventions for each one. It's just, it's an assessment that gives us everything we need. It also meets the requirement for a dyslexia screen or where map does not. So had we stuck with map only and K R A only, I was still gonna have, we were still gonna have to do another assessment because we have to do a dyslexia screen. So it identified more kids. That is not a bad thing. We identified more kids that needed reading assistance. We gave them reading assistance. And then when we gave the same assessment at the end of kindergarten last year, seventy-six percent of those kids were now on track. So we were able to provide the interventions that we needed to kids that showed that they needed it, that may have been missed by more of a comprehension assessment. But even though we made more growth. We actually then got hurt on the report card because it triggered that ten percent. So then, let me, so if you go to the next slide. So when we look at this. I'm gonna back up a tiny bit. So I'm still focused on that middle column, okay, improving theirs. So improving literacy, let's remember that it is only weighted. If you hit the ten percent by kindergarten, kindergarten alone, and now we're done with kindergarten data. They don't factor through a report card again. The early literacy, I'm sorry, the improving literacy percent then is based solely on that fall reading assessment, the fall diagnostic. Which we have to give to kindergartners, first graders, second graders and third graders. We now are measured by how many students come off of a rim from year to year. So for example, last year, right now, our second graders, when I get their diagnostic data, which I should get in the next couple of weeks. I'm gonna take last year's first grade RIMP list, who are now second graders. I'm going to see how many of those kids are now on track and that's now my percentage for second grade who have come off of a rim or now on track. Okay, so then second grade, I'm gonna look at my current third grade data and compare it to last year's second grade, because that, we were second grade last year. So in twenty-three, remind you, in twenty-three, when we got five stars for this component. We made thirty-six, roughly seven, thirty-seven percent growth. Thirty-seven percent of our kids came off of a rim from one year to the next. But it didn't count for us because we didn't hit the ten percent. Fast forward, we're now at almost fifty percent. So we now have fifty percent almost of our kids that came off of a rim from one year to the next. Okay, first to second, second to third, phenomenal growth, thirteen percent improvement in getting kids on track reading. But because our kindergartners who are not counted in this tour. Hit that above ten percent, it changed all the weights, which then did hurt our point total. And that is what officially. So again. Our questions, do we have a district literacy plan? We absolutely do. It's, it's about a thirty-ish page document. It's still building as we continue working on this. But I wanted to make sure you had the link to it. And then again, just as we always do, are we seeing growth? Absolutely. We, we are doing the right things. Our elementary staff is phenomenal and they continue to grow. They continue to do more interventions. We are seeing growth in not only groups, but in all the grade levels. We're seeing growth in all of our subgroups because we're doing exactly what we need to be. Um, but again, it's just that, that data. So again, what are our action steps? Um, we are going to, we're utilizing three different data points this year in grade K, but this is a good thing because again. Last year we didn't give map, but map does give us a nice comprehension score. So we're going to utilize map, DIBELS and K R A, just so we can get that whole view of the child. Um, that we get the fluency, we get the letter and sounds, letter naming, but we also get the comprehension. And again, K R A, not bad data at all. But it's something we have to give and we have more that can pinpoint interventions um such as DIBELS. We do continue to work with our ESC consultant um with our literacy committee, but we pull out as a literacy committee every other month. But she is going to be pushing into classrooms in between those months. Um, so we continue continuous PD and that is not just focused on K uh three. We look at, or K six, we are looking at K twelve. Our win groups, which uh what I need in groups are, I've already began. They started the first week of school utilizing last year's spring data. And then again, we continue to change um intervention groups and qualifiers to our Title One program, which you are actually, would be hopefully approving for me tonight. We always base our qualifiers based on student lead. Um, and we alter that every single year utilizing data trends from. Keep going. So again, this is kind of where, where we wound up with that point zero one eight, uh, the fluctuation achievement. But again, that does ebb and flow. Uh, the subgroup growth, yes, again, ebbs and flows. Um, however, again, I do really want to um show, showcase that ELL department. I mean, seeing a seven, over seven percent growth in ELL in one year is, is unbelievable. So Jenny Pennyworth, her team are doing a phenomenal job. And it was the improving literacy measure, um, that, that was our, our biggest deduction. So on paper, if we keep going, we're at four and a half stars. But we really have a star district. You look at what's actually going on here and what occurs in, inside and outside of our classrooms every single day. Um, and we are, I started to search through it. So I'll.
Let's answer Joe's question after that is when you look at, um, when, when we went through this and as Amanda and Paul shared. You're gonna see some general ebb and flows, up a little bit here, down a little bit here. In a couple of areas, we were down. Lower than what we would expect, but those scores didn't. They weren't the tipping point in um our rating. The tipping point in our rating was the early literacy. And it was the fact that um you dropped so much with, with tripling the amount of students you're identifying for the reading improvement plan. And so when you look at the, the boxes to check.
Yep.
Um, the answer to that is um looking at the assessments that are being used because even though we used the um. Uh, the, the DIBELS to report to the state, was that the appropriate one to use? You know, is map a, a better one to use? And then we use uh these other measures to identify our intervention groups, you know? So being able to figure that out, we'll know uh probably the end of October.
Yeah, because that's when I'll get K R A data. I'll get DIBELS and map data.
Yeah, so when, we'll know where we are around the ten percent. Um, so it's not necessarily uh like uh. A box that we can look at in there, but you know, one of the things, so a couple of things that we see in our favor. Is um all the work they're doing for early literacy in the elementary school and the fact you're seeing. Um, the students who are on reading uh monitoring plans. We're seeing a higher and higher percentage of them coming off. And if we see that trend continue, then even if it's at the ten percent, we should be able to make that up. A variable that we just can't adjust for right now is the college one.
Right.
You know, because. Is that one where we get, you know, everything else in check with the achievements in check, gap closing, progress. Um, early literacy, all that's in check. And then we uh find out. What the college thing is and, and that percentage gets us, we don't know. Cause on it, we're, we're sitting here on. September twenty-third of the year, they're going to grade us and we have no, they don't know what to tell us.
Right.
What it is. So that's, that's a loose end that I just can't tie.
Help. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's.
I like the uh. The fact that the DIBELS gives so much information.
It's, it's a great report. You know, I see the family report for my own son and it really breaks it down exactly where his strengths are, weaknesses are and what you can do at home, which is really nice. It gives, it gives resources for the parents. It's great work.
And the best way for us to access this, to have it in our back pocket would be what?
The presentation?
Yeah.
I'll share. Yeah, I'll just share directly with you. Absolutely.
You, you're really gonna give the presentation to your neighbors?
Um, my presentation would pale, pale in comparison. Having, having the data, again, I, I believe we are absolutely a five-star district. I think you know. Um, I have a tough time sometimes with legislators and how they grade schools. Um, inevitably though, an article comes out and part of our job is to, hey, what is? The, the score, I think is fantastic. I think it's a great score.
How many times have they even changed the report card in the last?
Understood. So it's just, it's an opportunity, another opportunity for us to boast about a school that we're very proud of. And you're right, we have phenomenal educators here.
So here's the other parts that we really struggled with is as we. Saw the early literacy and the impact that it had. You know, it was really. It was really tough because for us. You know, we're, we have a group of um. Early childhood educators who are. Doing more interventions, seeing more students come off improvement plans. So they're actually being more targeted and thoughtful and seeing. Results seen, you saw from thirty-six, was it thirty-six point nine to forty-nine point five? So they actually saw a jump. And then you would think that they'd be able to turn around and say, yay, I'm proud of what I did.
Right.
But then. That measure comes out and it's like, well, yeah, but we added this new thing because your kindergarten, your district chose a different screener. So therefore, you know, now you're the reason we're not a, a five. And that's not, that, that's something we really tried to think of. How do you say that, yeah, it was this early childhood and be able to show, because most people won't take this much time.
Right.
And. You know, that was the hard part for us is because we really saw the improvements early childhood was making. And to be able to message it so, so that people understood that, you know, we actually saw a jump in student.
Right.
Uh, improvement in the, the, because there's no state assessment in first grade and second grade, right? And so we can't point to an assessment there. So that was the part, we didn't want our um early educators to get deflated. And, and to think, oh, we worked so hard and showed growth and now. We have that. So that, that's what was frustrating to us.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
So you advocated your.
I did. You know what I, yes, so my superintendent's report, I knew. We, we have forty-nine minutes of academics that you were able to produce, Peyton. So I will just answer any um. Uh, recommendation questions that you may have when my recommendations come out.
Okay, that brings us to you, Mr. Hopkins, for your presentation report.
Unfortunately for the audience, I'm not gonna be that quick. So. I apologize in advance, but there are some, a number of topics that I would like to go over uh with the board tonight to make sure we're. All up to speed. Uh, first and uh first, I'd like to bring the board attention, uh, just a reminder, Capitol Conference, November tenth through the twelfth. Down in Columbus, I have um. Registered, each of you already and have my assistant made the hotel bookings uh. Last week. So uh if there is something that uh, if somebody would come up and you're not able to attend. Or you'd like to change the dates that you'll be attending, you'll only attending partially, if you'd let me know. Uh, I do ask that you would let me know, know later than the end of October, so we can make the appropriate uh adjustments if need be. Uh, I do ask that you would let me know, know later than the end of October, so we can make the appropriate uh, adjustments if need be. Had the opportunity to meet with uh, finance, treasurer's finance committee uh, the other day with uh, Mr. Kraft and Mr. Fanouken, and I wanted to uh, talk through some of that uh, meeting with the entire board. I want to start uh, with that uh, going over a financial overview of where the district ended uh, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So our fiscal year runs July first until June thirtieth. Unfortunately, I was able to bring this uh, to the board over the summer, but I want to take the time now. It's especially relevant as we go into the next conversation afterwards about some spending and budgeting. Uh, so as we look at our, our fiscal year twenty-four, I want to start off by saying we had a very good year. Okay? We're very fortunate. Uh, when you look at uh, what's in front of you here, and I can get this, make it available online for others to see it. But the board has in front of them what looks like your five-year forecast, but it's really only showing you the last five years of actual uh, 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 revenue and expenditures. So when we look at our forecast, we typically show three years of actuals and then five years going forward. This isn't a presentation of the forecast. This is just bringing the board up to speed on where we ended the fiscal year and giving you some reference uh, for the years past. So when we look at uh, the, if you look at the front page, which starts with line number one point zero one zero, this is where your property tax uh, uh, comes in. We increased our property tax collections by roughly eight hundred thousand dollars uh, throughout the year. Um, we did not have any new levies on. We didn't have any uh, major changes. That this is not reflective of the reassessment that we talked about a couple of meetings ago. Uh, as where uh, Kaya County uh, had posted the information regarding the uh, six-year reassessment, reappraisals. Um, but this has really gone up and I'm going to tell you mostly where it's gone up is two things during um, during each six-year period, by law, the county is required to do reappraisals every six years. Every, in the middle of that, so three years into the reappraisal cycle, they're required to do a triennial update. Okay? So we're not in the point of either one of those. So any increases that we see to our valuation are going to be tied primarily to two pieces. Uh, one new construction. Okay? New construction is uh, not part of House Bill nine twenty. It's not, it doesn't get reduced based on uh, uh, as values go up. So new construction, when it comes on the tax duplicate, we start seeing a increase in revenue. Uh, the other piece could be uh, some minor um, and I say minor as an overall look to the community, but some minor changes because if the property was sold, uh, when it gets reported to the county, the county may increase uh, the property values for the next uh, the new home. And so based on the sale price, so that can be reflected as well. So those are really the only two that you're going to see uh, through here. It's not a widespread thing across the uh, city. Uh, it's not like the reappraisal or the triennial update. These are targeted ones based on home sales and new construction. So that's where we're seeing that increase in property taxes. Uh, when we go down there, uh, the next line that I want to point out is one point zero three five unrestricted states grant uh, grants and aid. This is seeing a million dollar increase year over year uh, from fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, the primary reason for that is uh, to the credit of uh, the Alliance for High Quality Education. Uh, they have been uh, very, very uh, strong advocates uh, in working with uh, the state legislator on moving districts like ours from a minimum five percent state share to a ten percent state share. So that uh, saw some increase from us. So we saw about a million dollar increase there. A little more when you look at the second line as some of the grants are now considered restricted grades. But overall, uh, we're able to see that increase and I'm very appreciative of the work that the Alliance did on behalf of Westlake Schools. Um, and then the only other one that I'll point out for revenue is uh, all other revenue, uh, line uh, one point zero six zero. Uh, this is primarily where uh, our interest income is going. Uh, we've been very fortunate. We're carrying a large cash balance. Uh, interest uh, has been very high. Uh, we're seeing both in investments and in our checking account. Uh, you know, uh, Star Ohio is had been sitting around five, uh, five and a quarter percent. Uh, so we're able to, you know, get a nice return on our money, uh, either, either in the bank or in investments, longer-term investments, even our longer-term investments, because we're limited on what we can do, uh, are actually paying, you know, very similar to what the short-term uh, uh, checking accounts or, or short-term Star Ohio payments were as well. So we're right around that four or five, uh, five and a half percent. So uh, that has been beneficial to the district and we've seen an increase, especially the past two years. As we know, the overall market for interest rates has gone up specifically over the past two years. Uh, this is very much uh, the different opposite end of where we were a number of years ago when interest was uh, you know, at zero or close to it. Um, the opposite side of all of this is going to be your expenditure side. Okay? And moving down to your expenditures of uh, uh, three point one, uh, three point zero, I'm sorry, three point zero one zero personnel services. Um, you're seeing a increase from uh, twenty-three to twenty-four of only about uh, three hundred thousand dollars. Um, give or take there. Uh, I do want to point out a few pieces. Um, and I did speak about this as a board meeting, uh, going back earlier in the year. Um, we made a business decision as we uh, finished out Esser funds. And part of that business decision was uh, the Esser funds, we could have had a run-out period through this fall. Okay? Uh, what we did is we charged off salaries for the last roughly five, six hundred thousand dollars. So instead of when we actually incurred those salaries, it would have been a general fund, we were able to charge that off to Esser. That's an allowable expense under the Esser grant. Okay? Uh, most grants, we were not allowed to do that. That's actually specifically uh, forbidden in most of our federal grants. But in Esser, because the way it was set up uh, under uh, under the COVID pandemic, we were allowed to charge off uh, salaries and we did in this case. Uh, it doesn't have a uh, uh, material effect on our bottom line. Either we would see the uh, savings in fiscal year twenty-four, or we would see them this year in fiscal year twenty-five. We had no uh, specific plans for that run-out. Uh, Paul Wilson had overseen that program for the past, it feels like forever, but I think it's only been about uh, three years yet. And um, did a real nice job working uh, with uh, my staff, with the administrators to work through a program that provided targeted assistance uh, for our students specifically for learning loss. Uh, this district is not uh, one of the districts you've seen uh, in newspaper articles or magazine articles about building bird sanctuaries or ball fields or, you know, different stadiums. I mean, different things like that. Uh, Westlake Schools uh, was very targeted in using that money uh, to address learning loss uh, from the pandemic. That was our goal the whole time, uh, and increasing technology in our, in one-to-one uh, within our students. So I'm very proud how we use that, but that is something you'll see and, and why our salaries last year was down a little bit. Uh, because it is going to be up then this year. Uh, moving down, you'll see in uh, insurance benefits were up roughly a million dollars last year. Uh, I expect that to be a little more this year as well as we were uh, currently notified of about a twelve and a half percent increase on our health insurance premiums, uh, health insurance. And this is not uh, just uh, surrounding school districts. You're seeing health insurance uh, around the country increase in cost. You're seeing it uh, both private publicly. Um, it's just a difficult market uh, that we're seeing in health insurance. And, and uh, we continue to, to see that large increases unfortunately. Uh, purchase services, one of the main increases in purchase services from twenty-three to twenty-four is um, we made again a business move, changing some uh, tuition out of our people services department from grant funding to uh, general fund uh, dollars. We're then using those grant funds uh, to pay for some salary benefits from some, for some new staff members. Uh, again, there's no uh, you can do it either way. Uh, I chose to uh, work with people services uh, to do this in order to make uh, some of our accounting a little bit easier as the new staff are coming in and paid through the grant. Um, really, uh, you know, the rest of it is not terribly different numbers. I do want to point out down at line five point uh, zero one zero, operating transfers out. Uh, we did, uh, we were able to transfer out money for our ball fields last year. Uh, this paid for the baseball softball. Uh, and if you haven't been out there, it's fantastic uh, facility and it's turned out really, really nice. Uh, but uh, we did transfer from general fund, so that's obviously a large uh, change there. Um, what this bottom line comes down to is if you look at the bottom of first page, uh, we were excess revenues. So we were not deficit spending, but we had excess revenues of two point four million dollars. So uh, you know, last year in twenty-three, we're almost at break even at eleven thousand dollars. Uh, really, statistically, we would have been at break even on the uh, budget that we have, but this year we had a uh, nice uh, additional uh, revenue come in and, and our expenses maintained similar numbers. So we were able to bank a good amount of money. If you flip the page, you'll see um, your cash balance that we started in fiscal year twenty twenty-four of thirty-two point seven million rounding. Um, and then we start, we ended the fiscal year with thirty-five uh, point one point two million uh, dollars. So we saw that increase there. We did have a little bit more in encumbrances this year uh, than we have typically carried for the past few years, but nothing crazy. And uh, so the bottom line for the school district of our unreserved cash balance, uh, we increased a little over two million dollars to thirty-two point nine million dollars. Uh, so financially had a great year. We're in a great position. Now, as we look into fiscal year twenty-five, we had a couple of um, pieces, like I talked about Esser funds. We, we've, the board heard presentations as Mr. Wilson had some of our staff come in and talk about what we're paying for with Esser funds. Uh, the board has heard uh, those presentations. We are uh, making every plan to continue on a number of those services that we were paying for with Esser, including uh, I think some social workers, uh, some E L L, some nurse, nursing services, uh, things like that. And so that's going to be moved into general fund now. Okay? That six hundred thousand dollars, five, six hundred thousand dollars that I wrote off is obviously won't be written off this year. It will be in uh, uh, general fund dollars. So some of these are deferred expenses, I'll, I'll kind of call them. Uh, so that we didn't, you know, realize in last year, we had some uh, deferrals that we had with some uh, agreements that the board had approved uh, that we did not pay at the end of the fiscal year. We paid them in the new year. So some of them are deferred costs that we're going to have, but um, but I'm very, very uh, happy where the, the district ended up this year and I think that we're positioned very well moving forward. So moving into the next piece, if you don't have any specific qu- uh, questions on that, okay? Is I want to touch upon um, our, a little bit uh, more information on our finance committee meeting um, before I go into our budget. And several things you'll notice in here, we have some uh, power strips sitting on top of the table. Uh, unfortunately, we were cited uh, by the fire inspector um, at our last inspection because of the number of cords that we have running on the floor uh, throughout uh, this room. So uh, we did bring it up in our finance meeting and we are, uh, I've asked uh, Mr. House and Mr. Kosovar uh, to work through a plan of going to uh, changing out some of this furniture in here uh, to more uh, fixed furniture where we would have uh, uh, more permanent uh, wiring that would run through uh, the tables. So um, that's going to be an expense and I'll send some of those proposals out to you guys so you get an idea of, of what it is. Uh, we also talked about uh, two possible uh, projects that we would be uh, looking at this year. One is, while this room is used for a lot of things, um, and having fixed furniture would give less flexibility in this room. Uh, we are looking at changing the gym here over to a professional development uh, room. The gym isn't used as a gym anymore. Uh, we have minimal use uh, with Link during the summer. Um, and Link's not here during the school year, so uh, it really is not used for that gymnasium. So we would, you know, just do some carpet square flooring. Uh, you know, the major expense would be uh, uh, climate control, A C. Uh, it only has heat in there right now. It never had A C in buildings and older buildings. So uh, we are uh, looking at, at getting some proposals to do that. And then uh, it was brought up, um, and I, and I support the idea is um, especially with carrying over a larger cash balance, one of the i- items we might want to target this year is uh, some additional safety uh, in two areas. One specifically at D I S. D I S, if you recall, uh, Mr. Kosovar put together a grant uh, application for uh, a vestibule uh, so that you would have a second level of entry. So all of our buildings are set up right now where we have uh, the outer door, you're, you're, you're standing outside. You press a buzzer, you're allowed into an airlock area, okay? Where you're locked in again, and then before you can get to uh, people, you're uh, have to be buzzed in a second time. Okay? Uh, D I S is the exception. If you've been over to D I S during the school day uh, to buzz in, you stand outside and you walk immediately into the office area. So uh, this would be building a, it would be permanent construction. It's not something that would be a uh, just an easy fix. But uh, we think it would be worthwhile to look at doing uh, permanent construction of vestib- vestibule. He put together that grant application. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant. So we would be looking at either using P I dollars uh, or uh, general fund dollars, moving them over to P I in order to do a project like that. Um, we do think it's worthwhile and, and would provide a benefit uh, for the safety of our students. Uh, and that's why it was brought up as, as a proposal to talk about with the board here.
Do you have an approximation of the cost of what that would be?
So under the grant, it was uh, uh, roughly a half million dollars is what we had requested uh, during the grant to do that. So I would assume that would be uh, the, the budget is kind of where we're targeting right now, uh, as we go into it.
So just to mention, you know, and, and it has to be, yeah, we're not look, it, it will be costly because it is something, when you do something like that, that's going to be there forever. You want it to look nice. And then the other consideration is when you are going to have someone standing there and buzz, it has to have some overhang. You know, just like you have, like when, not maybe not just like at um, the middle school or the elementary school, even the high school, you have a little bit there, you know, so someone's not standing in the rain or the elements while they're waiting to get buzzed in. So I think it would, it, it would, it's going to cost a, what I don't know, but.
It's not just building a cage.
No.
No.
No, it's not. No, it isn't. Well, it's not, but well, but seriously, it's not like a metal fence type of thing.
If they're trying to go for the most cost-effective, which I don't think would really fly in our community.
No, we're looking for something that would uh, fit the design of the building. Okay? Um, you know, certainly, you know, it, it uh, even, you know, the building is uh, our older building, but we'd want to fit the design of the building. But it would be a uh, looking ideally in for that in interior space that it would be just like entering one of our other buildings. Uh, the other piece with security is uh, we're researching right now and it was brought up recently because of some unfortunate events in other parts of the country, uh, where uh, teachers essentially would have clicking devices, clicker devices.
All sat.
You know, all sat, again, would have a devices that they would be able to uh, either request help or go into a panic lockdown mode uh, by just clicking the device that they may wear on their neck. Um, it would allow a far quicker response times. Uh, it would connect uh, directly uh, to the police. You wouldn't have to worry about getting the phone. They could do it and will report their location. Um, again, we're trying to look at what best serves uh, our students uh, in, you know, again, we hope these things would never be used, but you know, in, in case need be.
And we're in research phase right now with regard to such a device.
We are. So we're looking into that. Uh, obviously, uh, we've got some costs on it. Um, you know, there's one major player right now because they're the ones who have attention has been drawn to right now. Uh, but I think that's probably something you guys also will see at Capitol Conference as we walk through there and, and see some different options as well. I think that's going to be a popular uh, item uh, as schools start looking into that.
And research on that, we may do that uh, sooner rather than later, only because of um, current events, um, Capitol Conference. Yep. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I think they're already have pulled information. Uh, again, right now we have the uh, and you'll see on the board agenda under Scott's item. Uh, you know, we have Adam House over here working directly with Dave Kos. And so we have a little bit of uh, extra hands right now. And so this is a great opportunity uh, to uh, take advantage of that and do some of that research when, sometimes it's a little time.
So is there any uh, chance of uh, any future uh, safety grants or, or grants that would be available for maybe?
We applied.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, Todd, you want to say something else?
No, go ahead.
Um, I don't know how far it's going to go, but there was a senator that introduced legislation to make those uh, panic devices mandatory. And you know, the request then is if they're going to pass a law to make something mandatory, maybe open up more grants or type of things for districts. So I think um, when you look at an area where legislators can agree, and that's school safety. I mean, that's something that is really um, uh, across aisles. And, and it has been an area where they've been generous in opening grants. So our hope is that if they are going to come with some more legislation, that they do open some financing or grants as well.
Is there an example in the past where say a district uh, was uh, ahead of uh, the game in purchasing? And then something comes along from the legislative point of view and there's a retroactive move. Just, is there an example of that or no?
I haven't seen a retroactive, but here's the thing, when, when you look at, which I, and, and I think you bring up a really good point because um, one of the, one of the things that I thought the state has done pretty well is when they've looked at safety grants, they gave you uh, examples of what you could use it on and they, they. And they they encouraged you, if you have another idea, you know, let us know. So if you have some districts who are, who haven't been as fortunate when you look at carryovers and stuff and they don't have some of the things we have, then yeah, they may use the grant for something else. But then when you're farther along like we are, you can be able to utilize it for something like this, or RSROs always have ideas. I mean, we'll, you'll see in our safety committee meeting, they'll be saying, we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that. Yeah. So the money will find that I've not seen them say, since you have this, we'll give you some funding for something you already purchased. But we could apply for the next thing because there's always a next thing that we can get.
Makes sense.
Any other questions on that right now or Mr. Crash, Mr. Free, anything you'd like to add from our conversation?
Does it make sense to bring up, I think about a transfer from general fund to capital improvements with a surplus that we have with the board entertain a conversation, you know, do we transfer some of those funds to permanent improvement, capital set asides for the next roof? The next capital improvement. It's something we've talked about in the past. We do have surplus. Do we take some of those funds and set aside?
Yeah, I think that's a great conversation to have with the board. You know, I want to just point out, because we talked about it. Going back to twenty sixteen, okay, for the board members who were on the board, you know, at that time, the decision was made to add a P I levy. And we initially were going to do it at one mil. We dropped it to a point eight mils. It was not based on our needs. Okay. It was based on no additional taxes as some millage was falling off of the ballot. So it was, it was really lined up, not again, not on what we need to to maintain our buildings and vehicles, but rather just at a dollar figure or or millage amount so that it would have the least amount of impact on our community. With that being said, it generates one point one million dollars a year. Okay. The challenges that we face right now is, you know, the the board can tell us what you want for certain items. You can also tell us what, how many, what is your comfort level with the age of our buses? Okay, you know, what is appropriate for the age of our buses? You know, we're not a district that's replacing buses every, you know, five years. That's and and we're never going to be that district. Okay. But an example would be is if we want to target, you know, say a twelve year life cycle on our buses. Okay. That means you need to buy four buses every single year. Okay, the going rate on a bus right now is roughly a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So out of your one point one million, okay, you lose a half million dollars right off the top. Okay. Additionally, if the board recalls in twenty seventeen, maybe eight, probably in eighteen, the board did some what's called manuscript debt where we took a million dollars and financed a million dollars to pay for upgrades at the elementary school as investments long term. Instead of wood clad windows, aluminum windows, instead of fluorescent lighting, LED lighting, things like that. Okay. We're still paying back a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years in debt coming back on that. So really that one point one million is down to a million now. If you want a twelve year life cycle on your buses, you really have about five hundred thousand dollars left. Okay. We're not set up where our goal was originally to have set asides. We haven't been able to do that. So if you are, if you do want to put money away as set asides, the best, better, my recommendation to you would be doing it through transferring funds out of out of general fund. Because P I is just, there's too many demands on P I right now. Okay. And I don't foresee that declining. We're very, very fortunate this year. Again, thank you for remember up here now. We're very, very fortunate that our roof at the high school was replaced.
She's in charge of all roofs from now on.
Some kind of dropping. So you're walking along.
But when we look at the work that was done at the high school, and this isn't the entire roof of the high school. This is solely the shingled roof portion of the high school. And then some mechanical repairs that need to be done on some of the air handlers or killers. It was nearly a million dollars. And so you have a million dollars that was spent this year that was paid for by insurance proceeds that really buy you twenty years. Okay, and so we're fortunate now where we would have, you know, been the high school now is forgive me, I think about twelve years old. Is that about right? Twelve years old. So, you know, in about eight more years, we would have been talking about, okay, we really need to start figuring out, you know, replacing the roof here. Now this buys us instead of, you know, having eight years left, we've got twenty years now. So that helps us immensely, but the demands on P I are just more than than we have available for it. So I'm very open to the ideas that I would like to transfer. I wouldn't do it tonight. I think we'd have a good conversation. But it's something that we can talk.
What's, what about the possibility of putting another P I on the ballot?
Well, I think that's ultimately, I that's where my recommendation would go. I think that there's going to be a time here when the board's going to be back on the ballot for a for operating level. The last time the board passed an operating levy was in two thousand and six, May of two thousand and six. So it's been over eighteen years now. We've been very, very fortunate. We are very quickly approaching the twenty mil floor. After this reappraisal, we should be really close to it. Okay. You know, this is, I am very grateful that especially with numbers like this from last fiscal year that we are not on the ballot in November here with a reappraisal, with carrying over large, large sums of money. But we're going to be on the ballot here in, in, you know, in the foreseeable future. Okay. You know, if the five year forecast now, again, I I underestimate revenue and overestimate expenditures. I'm conservative on how I work the forecast, but you know, there's going to be my recommendation during that five years that you're going to have to be on the ballot. It's just a fact of life. Something dramatic would have to happen.
Before the next reappraisal for sure.
Absolutely. And so I think that it would be wise for the board to couple a P I or bond issue, but I would recommend a P I with a operating level. And then what we could do with that P I is you could do a tan, it's called a tax anticipatory note, and you would borrow against it and you could do some of your major upgrades that the the district wants to handle. And so you would do that upfront and then you'd still have that P I stream coming in, going, you know, each year for. Thanks. All right. So the last thing that I would like to discuss tonight is my budget proposal for the board. I'm going to go over this very quickly, but if you'd like more details, please let me know. If you look on board docs, actually, under my first item, I believe it is, you'll see the actual documents for the proposal for the proposed budget. It's twenty two pages long. We do go through every line item in our object levels of four hundreds, five hundred, six hundreds and eight hundreds, nine hundreds. Those are your discretionary spending. Okay. I'm not going through those line items by any means, but ultimately what's in front of you tonight is a general fund budget of roughly sixty one million dollars. Okay, when we look at again what we spent last year, okay, our actual expenditures last year, not counting transfers and advances, okay, would have been right around that forgive me, fifty, fifty seven, fifty eight million dollars. Okay. So this is up slightly at sixty one million dollars. We're seeing that for a number of reasons. We have some new contracts that were negotiated that will have some impact going forward. We know some inflationary pressures that we're seeing that we're moving forward, but I think it's a fair budget going forward. If you look at that presentation specifically and you work your way down to page number twelve, you'll see some of our changes of this year where, you know, I'm looking at about a four percent increase in salary. That covers our, what I kind of project as our increases of step and and changes in the new contracts. Seven percent increase in overall fringe benefits. Like I said, we're seeing a twelve and a half percent increase in healthcare benefits, but overall I view it as about a seven percent increase in fringe benefits. Nine percent increase in purchase services. Fifteen percent in supplies and materials, supplies and materials. We're continuing to see increase, but we're also spending a little bit more. And remember, when we look at some of our supplies and materials going back historically for a number of years, we were not doing textbook adoptions. We had postponed those. And now Paul and Amanda are working to re-implement those. So we were seeing those costs increase, but overall you know, we're planning for some increased costs, significant increased costs in supplies and materials. Capital outlay, I have a twenty seven percent increase. That's not necessarily realistic. Capital outlay, we set the budget, but we will utilize P I first for a number of things. So this is really a budget over what your actual expenditures last year. So that's one area that obviously is cushioned pretty good there. I do present a budget here. Like I said, all your detailed line items for your objects of your purchase services, supplies, materials, equipment, and then your other objects, including advances and transfers. I present the appropriation details by your each function level, two digit function and one digit object. All of that information is there and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it, but if not, that would conclude my report.
Okay, any questions?
I can tell you that at our meeting, we probably spent the most time on the budget reviewing each and every, well, not each and every item, but a number of the different items and looking at the historical, looking what Todd's thinking about for the future as well. And then we ended it with talking about improvements, capital improvements. So.
Sounds like you guys have fun at your meetings.
Yeah. And as as you'd expect, Mr. Kosovar, Mr. House presented just a very, very preliminary look over the next several years of capital improvements and they'll be presenting at a future meeting, just some of those things that we may take a closer look at.
And the timing is actually very good for us to look into the vestibule. Because we, if things go as planned, we would probably be able to have it up and ready for the next school year.
It's a project you'd have to do over the summer. And right now would be ideal as you can get all of your architectural work done, things like that. You can then hopefully bid in late winter, early spring and then have people on site as soon as school lets on.
I think that's an important, an important thing that needs to be done because the the safety of staff and students and everyone is just no comparison to that. And in light of everything that's happening around the country, it's crazy. You can't say, oh, that'll never happen here, you know. It's sad. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Okay, that brings us to our next item on our agenda, which is a hearing of the public. So if there is anybody that wishes to come forth and speak, no one, okay, then the board has had the opportunity to look over the previous minutes of the special meeting of August twelfth and our regular board meeting of August twenty sixth. So if there are, are there any additional corrections? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed, Mr. Hopkins? So they are approved. Okay, next up are your actual recommendations, Mr. Hopkins?
Thank you. You'll see in front of you tonight, I think I have seven recommendations in front of you. I'll briefly go through them. The first one, we've talked about our permanent appropriations. Again, if you have questions, please let me know. Second one is returning all the advances that we did at the end of last fiscal year as we're applying for, we're finalizing the F E Rs to turn them in this week for the federal grants. It just makes it easiest if I can return all of the advances that we made. I have one that a no certificate. I have a transportation agreement in this in regards specifically to a student who qualifies for transportation. But we've had some difficulty sourcing the transportation for this student. And so the parents have agreed to transport in this case, and so it's a agreement with the parents with mileage reimbursement. We have additional students that are going to schools that have already been deemed impractical. But they're new to, they've given us new information that they're attending that school. So I'm asking the board to approve those new students in practical as well, because they're going to schools that we've already deemed impractical. And then F and G are, as the board knows, we were able to come to an agreement with university hospitals on both the trainer services for our high school and middle school. It provides two and a half trainers, athletic trainers to our high school and middle school, which is fantastic. That's an increase from the one trainer that we've had in the past. So I know Nick is, I'm sorry, Mr. Renalo, our athletic director is ecstatic about it. Additionally, we were able to have the sponsorship agreement for a ten year agreement on our stadium naming rights. And so while these were we had agreements in principle over the summer, going back and forth with attorneys, making sure all the language is good. We were given the okay by both parties here this past week. So I'd like to have the board approve both of those. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have on any of those, but if not, if it so pleases the board, we combine them into one vote.
Okay, I do have one question. Have, have, has this agreement with the university hospital kicked in already where we already have the two and a half trainers or is that?
So it has, I believe, last I checked, we have two trainers right now. How they were looking to still fill the half position is that.
The last I heard, they, it's been posted, they're trying to find.
There were two trainers on the football field on Friday night. Okay.
So they very much are working. And and really, you know, even beyond football, it's fantastic that they're at football, but this gives us opportunity for trainers to be at a lot of your other sports that we traditionally have said, hey, you know what? We've got middle school football going on, so you can't be at soccer. We have, you know, or you can't be at middle school football because there's a soccer game going on. So this gives great flexibility for the athletics department to provide those trainers to as many sports.
One thing, since we're on the topic of it and Ms. Lizinski asked a question to to emphasize the sponsorship agreement is for half a million dollars.
It is.
And and that's fifty thousand dollars a year and that's another component that is more, so in this agreement, we have more trainers than we had before and also a larger upfront donation. And we're just really grateful. University Hospitals partnership.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Trezor's recommendations five A through five G?
So moved.
Second. Are there any additional questions or discussion?
Special thanks to Mr. Renalo and everyone on the team for negotiating agreement with U H.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
In the same group. They did look at Cleveland Clinic and had good conversations with them as well. They were very interested. So it was good to see that we were able to go out and see what the market actually bears.
And I appreciate that. The Cleveland Clinic was a, was really, we were torn between, we were very fortunate to have two excellent partners who wanted to partner with us. And both for athletic training services and for the stadium sponsorship. It was a very difficult decision, but it did come down to the ultimate financials. But we appreciate Cleveland Clinic meeting with us, putting in a proposal for us. It really, we genuinely, genuinely are appreciative.
It was humbling to have two, two like incredible hospital systems coming in. That's great.
And I I like the idea that had we gone with Cleveland Clinic though, the team doctor would have been a Westlake alum. So I feel bad about that, but oh, well, okay, roll call, please.
Craft?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Goggins.
And my recommendations, the only one I'm going to highlight is first one in six A where we have Mr. House here coming on as the coordinator of business operations. And so that's up for approval tonight. The rest of these have been shared with you and descriptions have been provided by each of the directors. So if you still do have questions on them, we can do it in discussion. And so if it is okay with the board, I'd like to do six A separate just to recognize Adam. And then six B through six R would be fine with me to combine.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation six A, the employment of Mr. House?
So moved second.
Any questions?
Does he come up and give us?
He has a big appetite to match.
Yes.
So does he?
Yes.
No.
Okay, where was I? You guys threw me on 6A. Is there?
You have a motion. We got it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Kurnap?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You sure you don't want him to come up and say?
No. These kids want to go home and get a good, and go to school tomorrow. Right?
Listen, this is planning commission.
Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation 6B through 6R?
So moved. Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
Just one quick question on, let's see, item N. The supplemental contracts for classified staff members, do they have specific roles or is just general roles? That's the ones with Kelly Carroll, Michelle Castello, Rebecca, Zane and Megan.
M.
And I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was looking at the one one.
Uh, game workers could, could be ticket takers, different.
This can be scoreboard operators. The prices are set by the athletic movement and then they would just be filled where needed.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Nope. Okay, roll call, please.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Pierna?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, are, we again have our second hearing of the public. So if anybody wishes to come up and speak. Okay, seeing no one come forward, brings us to board comments. As if we haven't commented enough tonight, but.
I think just real quick reminder, homecoming is coming up. We do have the parade, got the fire truck, Fire Eye Day, October 4th.
And Hall of Fame dinner is October 3rd, Thursday. Yeah, we have the truck. I have the candy. Yep. Is Mr. Woods, will they have the demon?
I will double check, but most likely he would like it.
Okay.
And if this, if Lozinski would like to drive.
Yes, he would. Okay.
One more date, I got an email from Greg Plantner regarding to Veterans Day. That is going to be November 8th at the elementary school. I know Veterans Day is on a Monday, but they're going to do it on the Friday before. Then he wanted to invite the board. So I don't have the exact times yet, but if you do have November 8th in the morning, you can mark your calendar.
We'll do.
And the Hall of Fame dinner, I, I know we received invitations recently. Are we set for Hall of Fame dinner?
We, we have a table.
Okay.
Yes. Pardon?
Did I pay you?
Yes, you paid. You Venmo'd me.
That's October 3rd.
Mr. Ranolo and Mr. Woods, are they at our table?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Guess what these kids are going to say when you go in.
Madam President, we're, we're set paying.
You're, you're paid.
Thank you.
Yes, and everyone else Venmo'd me. You've got to get Venmo.
And November 8th is the Veterans Day celebration.
For the alumni dinner, I will be a little late. That is also senior night for the volleyball team. I will be arriving after the.
Okay, we'll save your food.
I hope so.
Paid for.
It's paid for. Expect to see a mule bear.
Okay, any other board comments?
Real quick, the Demon Rally happened a couple of weeks ago prior to the first football game. It's okay, guys. I volunteered us all to be in the dunk tank next year. I'm not kidding. Talked to them about it. So I signed up.
Oh, well, good for you. I might be there.
I'm sure that, why, I mean, why wouldn't people want to throw, you know, softballs and try and dunk their board members?
I meant to throw at you. I'll be there to throw.
That's fine. As long as we can make some money for the, the district. So. Oh, also I had an opportunity to volunteer at the football concession stand for the roads game. Was it the roads game? It was the rain game.
Oh.
Where it rained pretty bad. So unfortunately, there's a lot of leftover food, but I was volunteering out, or excuse me, donated out to the police and firefighters over there. So. But it was interesting looking at that. It was the first time I'd done that. So I plan on doing it again, which is, you know, pretty fun. And then also, Mr. House, I just wanted to say that whenever my kids are traveling outside of the district for sporting events, I was trying to make it a point of saying hello to the bus drivers. Which are a great group of people so far that I've interacted with and it's great to see them out there representing the district and, you know, able to take our kids out to sporting events. And I'm sure many other types of events too, but that's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board items, there's none that I'm aware of. So that will bring us to is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal or state law?
So moved second.
Roll call, please.
To adjourn to the executive session at 7:36 PM. Craft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
Pierna?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are in executive.
So we are adjourned and there will be no action taken.
Your agendas?